I'd like to call to order the work session on May 11, 2020. We are all here. Our city clerk has a brief message.
Due to COVID-19 pandemic, the building is closed. However, our residents have several ways to watch the meetings and stay in touch with the council. They can view the meetings using Facebook, YouTube, or the link from our agendas using Granicus. The public may always contact the mayor and council at any time by sending an email to gycouncil@goodyearaz.gov.
Thank you very much. And before we go to the agenda, I just want to remind the people that are listening, all items listed are for discussion only. We will take no action and nor will we be taken from them. All right, on the agenda, we only have one item tonight. I'd like to remind council that staff will be pausing intermittently to answer our questions. So the first item is a presentation on the city's status as a CDVG entitlement community. Grants and Neighborhood Services Supervisor Kristina Pontesku will present.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. As the mayor said, I'm here tonight to talk about CDVG because we've received a letter from the county. Our three-year agreement with them will be expiring in June, and so we have the option to renew our membership in the urban county. Or, there we go, or pursue entitlement status. So first off, I'll be reviewing what is CDVG, and then I'll go over how CDVG funds come to the city. I'll review the constraints on the program, and then some advantages and disadvantages for both remaining in the urban county and pursuing entitlement status. CDVG is a federal grant from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. It stands for Community Development Block Grant. And the purpose of the grant is to provide decent housing, a suitable living environment, and expanded economic opportunities primarily to low and moderate income people. CDVG funds are distributed in two ways to the cities. Either through the urban county program, which is how we participate right now, or as an entitlement community directly to the city. As a part of the urban county, we participate with Maricopa County. You can see on this slide here a list of the other cities that participate with us. And Maricopa County, as the designated urban county, then provides a competitive grant application process for those member cities. You'll see that we're the largest participating city listed there. And the CDAC, or Community Development Advisory Committee, reviews those applications. Currently, Councilmember Hampton represents us on the CDAC, and Councilmember Campbell has spent many years, I know, representing our city in that organization. They review the applications and make a recommendation for funding levels to the County Board of Supervisors. So what it looks like visually is this. HUD makes an annual allocation to the county, and the county is responsible for submitting a five-year consolidated plan to HUD. HUD approves that five-year consolidated plan. And then the county is responsible for developing an annual action plan, which explains how that upcoming year's funds will be spent. They are responsible for the CAPR, which is a performance reporting, all environmental and labor compliance obligations. ITIS is the financial reporting. So you'll see there's quite a bit of administrative effort that goes into it. And then Maricopa County has elected to use the CDAC, which Goodyear has a seat on, to consider projects and programs against the priorities they've identified to fund. And Goodyear, in the case of this year, for example, is a recipient, where the county could provide those programs and projects as well. The county then audits the city of Goodyear, and HUD audits Maricopa County. In order to be an entitlement community, you have to be invited formally by HUD, and then it's a standing invitation. It's based on your housing stock, population, and poverty rates. Goodyear was first invited in 2008, but since then, we've continued on with our arrangement with the urban county, which we last renewed in 2017. And as I mentioned, it's set to expire on June 30, 2021. If we were to pursue entitlement status, the city would receive an annual allocation directly from HUD. So what it would look like is this. HUD would give the allocation directly to the city of Goodyear, and the city of Goodyear would be responsible for that five-year consolidated plan and annual action planning. They'd be responsible for all of the administrative overhead. And then our council could decide, based on the contents of our five-year plan, what projects and programs to fund. They could be city projects and programs, or we could pass funds along to a subrecipient to implement. But if we did that, we would be on the hook for their performance, because HUD will be auditing us, and we're responsible for auditing any subrecipients. So the question before us is, do we want to decline entitlement status and continue to compete in the urban county program? Or accept entitlement status and begin to administer the CDVG program on our own? And here you'll see a list of the current Maricopa County communities that are entitlement, along with the not entitlement communities that we compete against as a part of the urban county. Considerations that are worthy of factoring into your decision and discussion are the level of funding that the city would receive, the types of projects and programs that we have in our pipeline, and the administrative burden and our capacity to oversee that. The level of funding that the city of Goodyear would have received if we were entitlement in this fiscal year is $424,000 estimated per HUD. This fiscal year, through the competitive process at CDAC, we were awarded $303,200. You may remember, we submitted two applications this year, one for the North Subdivision Streetlights and the other for the baby pool conversion. Both were eligible projects, and the county CDAC elected to partially fund the North Subdivision Streetlight Program. The previous two years, we did not apply. My understanding is that is because staff was not able to identify eligible projects that would have met the expectations of CDAC in terms of their priorities. So regardless of whether you're an entitlement community or you're part of the urban county, there are constraints on what kind of projects these dollars can be used for. And the first order of business is that they have to meet a national objective. And for the majority of the funds, that national objective applies to serving low-mod individuals, and those would be people with 80% or less area median income. In addition to that, you can do projects that eliminate or prevent slumming light. And in the cases of, right now, for an example, where there's a national emergency, that's where the urgent need comes into play. You're also allowed to use a portion of the funds for administrative costs. So regardless of whether you're, oop, went too fast. Regardless of whether you're urban county or entitlement, your projects need to be eligible and meet that national objective, and they need to conform to national CDVG process and program implementation standards, spending caps, and oversight. And then they need to be relevant to the recipient agency's five-year consolidated plan. And for CDAC, that five-year consolidated plan prioritizes public safety, general infrastructure, public facilities, and community centers, for example. So that's why our streetlight project scored better than the baby pool conversion project, even though both are eligible initiatives. From the discussion at that committee meeting, it was evident that it would be unlikely that the current CDAC would ever fund the baby pool conversion project, because it didn't align with their priorities. But it's an allowable project. So if we were an entitlement community, what changes is it needs to be relevant to our five-year consolidated plan, and it aligns with Goodyear priorities. So there are also caps on the amount of funds that can be used for different parts of those national objectives. So to use round numbers, if we were to get an allocation of $400,000, we could use up to 20% for administrative expenses. And then that would leave $320,000, using this example, for programs and projects. Of that $320,000, at least 70%, of it, needs to be spent on low-mod income projects. So what that looks like is $224,000 minimum in this example. And then if we wanted to use the remainder for slumming blight or urgent need, we could. Or we could use up to 15% of the total award for public services, which is basically like direct services, that you might think of, like utility assistance, for example. So again, the example is that HUD gives an annual allocation to a direct recipient who is responsible for developing a five-year plan and a pretty intensive administrative burden. They use that five-year plan to identify projects and programs to spend the money on, and they get audited by HUD. And if they use any subrecipients, they're responsible for the performance and compliance of the subrecipients. Currently, as a part of the urban county, we participate in the environmental review. We contribute to the consolidated plan. We contribute content to the performance reporting, which is CAPR. We do quarterly reports. We're responsible for grant management duties like contracts, record keeping, Davis Bacon financial reporting, and we get audited by the county. This will be my first time living through an entire CDVG implementation, but I understand from Katie and Alex that it's estimated to take about 10% of the staff lead's time. If we were to pursue entitlement status, the administration includes, before we even get started, we'll need to get working on a five-year consolidated plan. That plan looks deeply at affordable housing, homelessness, and impediments to fair housing in our community, and it helps to identify community development needs, priorities, and activities. Then if you'll remember, that five-year plan is what informs our annual action planning, because whatever is raised in that five-year plan is what you would ideally be responding to with your annual action plan. And then we'd also need to develop policies and procedures to ensure that we have the good internal controls to be responsible recipients of that amount of federal funds. It's estimated, based on talking to Surprise in Avondale, that we could do that five-year consolidated plan and annual action plan and get support from a contractor with policies and procedures for $50,000 or less. And CDVG does allow administrative costs. This would be pre-award, so there is the option to recoup those or to just save the administrative costs for implementation. After that, there's the ongoing burden of an annual action plan, the CAPR, the financial reporting, environmental reviews, labor compliance, fair housing, training, and complaints. And we will be audited by HUD. This is recommended for a full-time employee at some point because of that administrative burden. But at this point, we feel that whether or not we need an employee depends on what sort of projects we decide we want to pursue, and if there's any subrecipient monitoring that needs to take place. If it gets more complex, there would be a need for an employee. But for getting this initiative, standing up, doing that five-year consolidated plan, and annual planning, and the policies and procedures, and if we keep it simple, like we do now, where we're funding one major CIP-type project, we may not need to hire an employee. If we did, though, it's important that you understand that those administrative costs being capped at 20% would not, at this point, cover the estimated total cost of $150,000. We'd only have about $84,000. So the advantages and disadvantages of each. If you were to remain with the urban county, the advantages are that the county does most of the work, and they most certainly do the heavy lifting. So it can easily be managed by current staff, and there is a bigger pool of resources to absorb those capped activities. So if we wanted to do something that was slumming blight, we could use a larger chunk of a larger pool of money. The disadvantages are that, as you saw, the city's not guaranteed funding each year, and project funding is bound by the CDAC priorities, not our own. And the city can't use any funds for administrative costs. If we were to pursue entitlement status, we would be guaranteed annual funding based on the federal budget each year, and up to 20% could be used for administrative costs. There'd be a lot more flexibility in the types of projects that we could do. And I hadn't mentioned this yet, but it does open the door to something called a Section 108 loan program. It's a totally different program application for us, but the tie is that it uses your entitlement allocation as a basis. And you can borrow up to five times that at a low interest to do projects that would otherwise also be eligible, meeting those national objectives. The disadvantages are, there's definitely an intensive startup effort, and at some point, we will need a dedicated staff person as the funds get bigger and the projects get more complex. And currently, that administrative cost wouldn't cover it. With all of that said, staff's recommendation is to accept HUD's invitation to become an entitlement community grantee effective fiscal year 2020 and separate from the urban county. With that, I will turn it over to you all for discussion and do my best to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Who would like to start? Don't everybody raise your hand at one time. Bill.
I've been writing my questions, and now I need my glasses to see what I've written. Sorry. I have a few, and they're all over the place. Is food bank support an eligible project?
It would be a public service one, depending on the nature of the project, but yes.
So using a real-life example, the food bank needs a new freezer. It's $10,000. We could theoretically, to keep it simple, we could purchase a freezer under that program for the food bank, because it's easy to audit.
Yeah. That's where it starts to get complicated, because there are disposal requirements. So that freezer, we need to know where that freezer is for the rest of that freezer's life.
Right. Okay. But it's in that giant circle. Okay. The second question is, if we don't use it, all of our entitlement funding, or if we say, "We're going to do this project in three years," and we're going to, stockpiling, I'm going to use that word, allowed, say, $400,000 this year, $400,000 the next year, $400,000 in the third year, and then you do this $1.2 million project? Is that allowed?
You may remember back when we returned some money to the county. Yeah, there's a limit. You can only have one and a half times your allocation. So it depends how much is left.
Oh, okay.
So whatever's not used from your this-year allocation by the time you come to next year, as long as you don't have a total of one and a half times next year's allocation, then you can re-obligate what's left in your pot.
So there is some variation of my term "stockpiling." Okay.
Yes. And there's that loan available also.
Is anyone in the valley not an entitlement and/or not in the CDAC? Is there anyone who's not doing either?
Well, there are some cities that get mentioned at CDAC that they're sitting out, like Fountain Hills, I feel like is one of them. I think when you do that, you may have the option of competing at the state.
Got it. Okay, final question. I feel like I'm on Who Wants to be a Millionaire? So if, and you may not be able to answer this, but if this is for us to start on July 1 of '21, which is the end of this upcoming fiscal year, we need to have that consultant onboard in this upcoming fiscal year to do the five-year consolidated plan, et cetera, before July 1?
So the feds operate on the October, September fiscal year, so it gets confusing. It's the program year, 2022, so it'd be effective October 2021. So it'd be like August 2021, that five-year plan would be due.
So if it's August, and our year starts July 1, it seems to me we're going to have to start earlier. Is that...
Yes, if we want the $50,000, we'll have to make sure that we have it in this year's upcoming fiscal year budget.
Right. And was that included in the budget stuff that we saw last week?
No.
I didn't think so.
There's still opportunity.
I didn't, I don't want to, it's $50,000, so I mean, it's not a big chunk. Okay, that's awesome. Thank you. Personally, I wanted to do this, and I'm looking Katie in the back. I wanted to do this like eight years ago, so I think it's time, and we've got a lot of needs we've not been able to meet. And I think the process of CDAC really makes you really decide whether it's worth the effort. We've had projects that have been worthy, but weren't worth the effort of the fight versus, we've got this entitlement, and now we can get the things done that we want to get done year after year. And I think it's certainly time for us as a community to do that. Thank you.
Joe?
You know, I'm going to go the opposite. I prefer them doing the heavy lifting. I prefer us not to take the next step and all the additional work that's going to be needed by bringing in staff to do these projects. I don't think we're ready for it yet. That's my own personal view. And I would hate to see us expand and hire staff and make that all internally to do that.
Sherri?
I have a couple of questions, and one was very similar to one of Bill's questions, because I noticed a couple of years on the CDAC, we got zero, or didn't request any. So if we had a phased project, not stockpiling, but if we had a phased project that we know would go over five to six years, could we use our allotment in that manner?
Yes. Like, an example would be the water line projects. We did that with CDAC's approval over the years, but we'd get to use the full, if we chose, we could use the full allocation towards that project.
So if we had a five-year project, we could say, "We're going to do this many water," I'm just using water lines again as an example, "this many, this many, this many," until we get the project done?
Right.
And...
It would also have to fit with the consolidated plan, which we have an opportunity to influence as we're developing the five-year plan, along with the community expressing what the needs are.
But that's our needs and everything, so we kind of get a... And then the other question is, with the federal money, we keep hearing about different stimulus. Before, it was like everything was, "We're going to stop community block. We're going to stop, we're going to stop, we're going to stop." Now, we're hearing talk again of, "We want to get money to the communities." Which, or have you heard which way more federal money would be easier for us to access the money? Which, or have you heard which way, um, more federal money would be easier for us to access the money?
So there's the Community Development Block Grant, and then there's the Community Services Block Grant. And I'm not sure, um, we can follow up with Jenna maybe, but, um, I know CSBG, Community Services Block Grant, tends to be more volatile, and CDBG, Community Development Block Grant, I understand, tends to be more, um, stable.
And then I got one more question. Is the amount that we're given, is that population-based, or how do they determine that amount?
It is population, housing conditions, and poverty levels.
Okay, um, yeah, I, I, I agree with the staff's recommendation. I think it gives us a chance to kind of like write our own future and kind of phase in what we want to do and have a little bit more certainty with, rather than the competing, and we don't get one, something one year. If we had a phased project, it might be another two years till we could get the money. And, uh, so I think I like your recommendation is, is the way to go. The question is about the staff person. That isn't someone we need this fiscal year yet?
No.
Okay, so we do have a little bit of a window on that.
It, I, I, knowing that there's a lot I don't know that I don't know, um, because I haven't even lived through a CBVG. I feel like I'll have the experience of this one that we're implementing right now with the county's support, and I'll try to learn that. Plus, I'll be working on the consolidated plan, so I'll have the ins and outs of, um, the rules of the program and the scope and the potential for things. And then, um, if we start sub-awarding to people, that's when I, I, I start to get nervous because that's beyond, um, that's, I think, when you need a staff person who can be paying more attention to than a project manager in engineering.
I, I get you, that's more like, because then you have to audit the sub-grantee. Okay, no, I, I agree with your recommendation, so thank you.
Next? Go ahead, Brandon.
So yeah, I think to Bill's point, when I first got on the CDAC, I was wondering why we weren't already part of the other group. But I had a quick question. How many staff members do you foresee us using in the future? I mean, is it one? Everybody is, I thought most of them only have one dedicated person, or is it more than one?
Just one in any time in the near future.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got millions and millions of dollars.
Yeah, I didn't know if Tempe or Chandler or those other companies, or those other cities, if they have more than one staff person managing.
And again, as we grow, and depending how, how much money we actually, like you said, millions of dollars, then we might need a little bit more help. But right now, Christina has, uh, an employee Kim in her, um, division also, so there, there's two of them.
Yeah, yeah, okay. And then we can't go back, right? Once we say we want to be entitled, we can't go backwards and say, "Hey, please let us back in." Our, our population went down for some reason, and now we want to come back to CDAC?
I think, I mean, it's a three-year agreement. So if we decided that we wanted to approach the county again, then basically what happens when we leave the county is we take our share of the pot of money that they're allocating each year. So they would get that pot back, and then they would administer it, we would compete for it.
Okay, yeah, I do like that it's more dedicated. I mean, being there at CDAC, I mean, some of the phased projects, like, for example, like Youngtown, they had a phased project, and they only got like Phase 2 done, and they had like six more phases to do, and they got turned down at least two years in a row. So at least this way, we'd be getting more control of our own destiny in a way, and be able to finish some of those waterline projects. More consistent funding sources, you can hopefully somewhat depend on whatever the county, wherever they actually send us, but more, more, um, reliable in a way, and create, control our own destiny, and at least we can do more things than, or things that we want to do that our city actually needs, as opposed to hoping, hoping and try to align with what, what the county wants. So I, I think, yeah, because I know originally, I remember this last presentation on this, and it wasn't, you guys advocated for us staying in. So now the dollar amount is higher, it does make more sense that we would want to do it now. So I'm on board with, with going and being an entitlement city. So I think there's a lot of better pros than, yeah, thank you.
Laura?
Can we look at Slide 21, please, on the entitlement funding example?
Christine, Christina, go back.
So the bulk of the money goes to the low mod?
Yes.
What exactly can you do? Can you give some examples of what that would look like?
Yeah, I can't get the slide to go, not wrong way. I can't read that far.
No, it goes forward.
Okay, so examples of low-mod projects would be home rehab, uh, for owner-occupied housing, um, that allows people to stay in their homes. Uh, it would be, um, anything that affects an area that's 51% or greater, low-mod, based on census tract. Um, it would, it could, so it could be directly to a person who is income-eligible, or to an area that's income-eligible. Or there are presumed, um, populations, and that would include, um, the elderly and disabled. So if you were to put like adapted equipment on a playground, the people who are going to use the adapted equipment are disabled people, therefore, you're serving the disabled people with that. You do have to think about, um, the senior, for example, if you were doing something to serve the senior population, you, you have to be conscientious of the fact that it would seem to be the more vulnerable senior population. Does that answer the question?
That helps. I was looking at these examples and then comparing it to what came up in the Goodyear Community Assessment in 2019. And, uh, a lot of that, the recommendations or the identified gaps had to do with food insecurity, access to mental health, activities that support family, resources for homeless, service for minorities, transportation and things like that. Would that fall into this low-mod category?
The, it would depend on the activity, and then, and then it would depend on the activity. So if you were to build a senior center, for example, that would be low-mod. But if you were to do home deli, or a congregate lunch program as a part of that senior center, that would be the direct service capped at the $48,000, using the example.
Okay, it's quite complicated.
Right, which is why the more complex that it gets, we would need a staff person to make sure we're following all the rules. But if we keep it simple, we should be good.
So historically, our CDBG funding has all been for infrastructure and not necessarily direct services to vulnerable populations?
Correct.
And we did not apply for the two years prior to? And was that because we didn't have projects that fit the box?
Correct.
Okay, it wasn't because we didn't identify needs?
We had, we had projects, but they weren't ones that would have satisfied CDAC's priorities. And, uh, uh, right. So we might have scored lower one year, yeah, because if you still have money in your pot. And also, from what I understand, the, um, the CDAC doesn't take well to coming every year. They feel like you should share the wealth.
Okay, if we look at Slide 24 that talks about the entitlement administration and the five-year consolidated plan? There it is. What would be the process do you envision for creating the five-year consolidated plan?
It's very extensive. We would hire a consultant. We could build off of what we already have from the community assessment. There's a public process component. They'll look at our housing stock, they'll look at, um, like in the assessment, you saw housing cost burden, they'll look at things like that. And then we'll have to go to the public and, and ask them what their thoughts are, what solutions they like around the different areas.
Okay. And the reason why we have to decide now, because we're still a member for the next year, correct? The next fiscal year, but we have to decide now because of the federal calendar, is that correct? In the lead time?
Yeah, the county needs to get back to the feds with their end of the deal, so we need to let the county know if we're a part of their equation.
Okay, yeah, I'm just concerned, one of my concerns is the timing of an additional position because of, I know there was other positions asked for in this budget year. We still face an uncertain future and not quite sure how that would all, uh, fit in, so. Okay, thank you.
Wally?
Um, well, I was very surprised when this came forward because I had not had any conversations regarding why we would want to do this. It has been my experience sitting on the committee since maybe 2011, um, until Brandon came onboard and I gave him my seat. Um, it's been difficult for us to find projects that are eligible for CBDG. We did not have a huge population of low-income or really old neighborhoods. We have no downtown blight, we have no, none of the things that all the other cities that are getting funded have. So we were at a disadvantage. And I'm not comfortable in, in going forward for a couple of reasons. Number one, we'll never know exactly how much we're going to get because the CBDG funds comes from the federal government. And every year at the budget times, they threaten to cut those funds. Because every year, I'm down there writing letters to Congress saying, "Don't cut those funds, they're so critical." But they're more critical to a lot of the, of the cities, more critical to them than to me and my city, because we're a fairly young city. Um, we, right now, don't have a huge homeless population problem. Uh, true, we don't have a senior center, but senior centers used to be built by CBDG funds. And then, uh, the government came and said you could not spend those funds on that particular, uh, building a senior center because, uh, I forgot now why they told us. So, um, that's why I'm just not comfortable. I, I don't know that we're going to get $400,000 every year, even though they say we could get up to, estimated, could be less. And, um, I, I just don't know. We get, our, our residents get, um, utility assistance through CareFirst in Avondale, and, and, uh, the money, of course, is allocated between Avondale and Goodyear, but then that's the way it should be. Um, so I'm, I'm with Joe. I don't think we're ready for it. I, I don't, I don't see that we have that. We, we don't have a, an affordable housing unit built in our city yet. Um, I guess we could build one if we got the money. Um, but I, I don't know, I'm just really torn with this because, and I wanted to ask Katie a bunch of questions, but I wasn't able to get her, so I don't have anything else to say.
And Bill, you have additional information or questions?
Let me, let me back up to the, the staff member discussion. Um, the impression that I got from you, Christina, was that, um, if we made this complicated in years going forward, that would be the, uh, the activation point for a, for a staff member. So we keep it simple, we keep moving forward. We're doing that with the in-house staff, because I think you said two things. You talked about a 10% job requirement, and then you talked about a full-time per, it takes about 10% of someone's time.
Mm-hmm, urban county.
Oh, there you go, so, um, and did you say that that 10% should theoretically carry over? If we were to take it on ourselves, did you think that number was going to be higher? Or do you think you and your staff are going to be able to do it with what you got?
I think it will be higher, but I think my staff and I will be able to, as the grants supervisor, I see it in line with my workload, uh, as long as...
So when we, when we set the five-year plan, we will know how complicated we've made it to whether that would activate a staff member or not?
Exactly, and we could prioritize according to
Right.
our available resources and priority, because that's how you set priorities, right?
Right, so, so that's the, the staff, I think the staff load. Um, when we talk about going forward, what, how much staff does it, does it look at? The other thing that I think we should be considering are the number of things that we didn't do or couldn't do because of the constraints that were put onto us by CDAC itself. If CDAC says you can only do these 10 things, but there are 20 things available, 10 of them weren't even available to us. So I don't know that we even know what good we could do in the community until we, until we take this step forward.
Exactly.
Is that?
Yeah, I can't look forward as well as I can look backwards. And I, the Western Avenue, um, real estate costs would have been an allowable expense. That was, so...
Yeah, for an improvement in that, in that particular area.
Yeah, it would have been capped at 30% probably, but...
Yeah, I mean, there's a number of things that we could do that we, that we don't know about.
Hire code enforcement inspector for up to two years, but they would have to work in like a slum, a redevelopment area, which historic Goodyear is. So if we were growing at a rate that we want, felt like we needed to add staff for code enforcement, no, you know, guarantees until I get more, uh, my hands dirtier, but it certainly appears to me that we could, we could explore, um, something like that and assign the person to the redevelopment area.
And are there still economic development opportunities available through CDAC? Yeah, so...
You have to create jobs.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of things that we can do that we aren't able to do. If we're entitlement, in entitlement community, there's a lot more things we're able to do than we are right now, and I think for me, that's the, that's the, the part of it. I look at this and I look at that list, and I think, I think we, because we're the largest, aside from Aracopa County, we're the largest city in CDAC. So our entitlement component is funding projects in Youngtown and, uh, Guadalupe and some of the very, very small communities, Wickenburg. We're paying for that out of what would be our theoretical federal entitlement. Much, not much different than, uh, are we a donor state or, uh, you know, a taking state from a federal tax perspective? But I, I don't want to be in, in that situation. I think we have a lot of unidentified needs in our community that we just, we haven't, we lacked funding, we've lacked opportunity, we've lacked, uh, really the, the ability. And I think this may give us the shot at doing that, um, for really a short, short burst of time. Whether the funding goes away, if it goes away, it goes away for Aracopa County, it goes away for us. So whether it goes away or not is kind of irrelevant because it goes away. Um, but if we can get it, and we, there are things that we can do some really good work in the community, then why are we not doing? If we don't have a staff, if it's not going to require a staff person, and we're really talking about a little, some staff time and $50,000. And we just last week talked about, you know, a half a billion-dollar budget, and I, I can't believe that we're going to, we're going to slow down on 50 grand to bring somebody in to, to maybe open us up for the future.
So if counts, okay, Bill? I mean, Joe, I had to do it one time.
Are you saying you're not going to be asking for a staff person this budget year?
No.
I, I still am where I am. I, I, I don't want to expand the government. I'll put it to you that way. I think based on the type of projects that we have here and funding, to me, $50,000 is still $50,000, and, um, uh, I just don't want to see it expanded.
Yes, Sherry?
Okay, Bill brought up a good point that got me thinking. So those two years in a row that we got zero. If our allocation was, give or take, $400,000, I'm just using round numbers, I'm sure it was probably a little bit less or whatever. So those two years, that $800,000 went to...
years, that $800,000 went to other cities that would have gone to us.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I think when we're looking at the net gain, I'm for that. I also like the idea, so we could use that. Because I know, we've talked about some of the Loma Linda area, some revitalization in that area. Is, that would be an acceptable area to do projects in?
Loma Linda is.
Around the pool, around the Goodyear.
Yes.
Historic Goodyear, that whole area, that would be a, a good area to do some projects. And even though they're residential, those are things that we could work with the residences in those areas, or the streets, or the, how would that, what kind of projects would be acceptable?
So it will be interesting to see what happens when the new census comes out, because the income, and then the income changes, especially from COVID-19. It's a moving target, I guess, poverty. We don't know, what we don't know yet. Right now, my understanding is that the Loma Linda historic Goodyear area is part of the revitalization or redevelopment area. So that would be slum and blight. So we could use up to 30% of the award on that. I don't know where that slide was exactly. And, but then, my understanding is north subdivisions, what is low-mod, that's why we were able to
Do more there.
Get the streetlight projects there.
Okay, yeah. I, I, that does really, when you bring about the donor state, that that's almost a million dollars over two years. That should have been coming to our citizens that went to other cities. And from what you said, sometimes it's just not good form to apply every year. They won't give you the same thing every year. And this way, we have control over our money, and you're not asking for a person this year. This is a future if it gets complicated. I'm good.
Any other comments? Well, I'll make my, you have it, and go ahead.
Sure, yeah. Yeah, I, I agree. I mean, looking at some of the projects that they, we don't, we even put into some of them, because it's not politically good to ask every single year as well, because we'll probably get turned down. But there are some neat projects, economic development. You know, Tolleson is redoing houses that are falling in disrepair in their neighborhoods. There's community centers, there's roads, sidewalks, all kinds of different projects out there that we haven't applied for, because, yeah, we look like we're taking too much, or, you know, we don't have the, the funding to do it. So this way, we could be more consistent, I think, with it. I, yeah, I like that we're not asking for a new body right now at this time, and going forward. So, yeah, I, I think it's more control over, of the money that we would have gotten either way, so.
Julie?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to make a, a note that the reason this is before council today is because our three-year contract with the county is coming to an end. So we do have to affirmatively receive policy direction on whether to renew for another three years with the county, or to become our own entitlement community. So I just wanted to clarify that. But in addition, knowing that once we become an entitlement community, whether or not it's now, or three years from now, or six years from now, it is unlikely that you backtrack and go back to the opposite direction. So we are not asking for a staff member now, and I honestly doubt we'd be asking for a staff member even in the next year. But knowing that this is beginning a program that would only continue to grow, as we continue to grow as a community, we did want to make sure that council was aware, eventually, it will require dedicated resources that are beyond what we'd likely recap from those administrative costs. So we didn't want to leave that out, because ultimately, you know, this program would just continue to grow and grow as our population grows. So just wanted to make a few clarifying comments. That's correct. The administrative would continue to grow, but we also didn't want to, you know, ask council to make this commitment to going to entitlement without acknowledging at some point, it likely would have some additional asks that go along with it.
Any other comments?
Just a quick question.
Laura?
This additional discussion has certainly been helpful, and don't want to leave money on the table that we would otherwise get. The thing that I wasn't sure of is, do we have a vision for what we would use it for? But based on what everybody's saying, that yes, there is plenty of need in, and plenty of things that we just never were able to ask for, because it didn't fit the narrow box. So if the box is bigger, and we have more discretion than, and we agree that there's ample need, then it, then it, then it does make sense.
Joe?
Just a quick question of the city manager. Does this mean this will be coming back to us for a vote on the specific contract?
That's correct. So this work session is anticipation of which direction we would take to you during a business item.
So it will be on, okay, as long as there's a vote coming. Thank you.
Next week.
Next meeting, I think.
Next meeting.
All right, I'm going to, okay, Wally, go ahead.
I just want to verify, regardless of whether we stay where we are or go to an entitlement city, there's going to be certain parameters that we have to do in order to spend that money, regardless of what kind of comprehensive plan we plan. Still has to be 70% low-income and specific things. So don't think we're going to all of a sudden have a pie in the sky and $400,000 to do anything we want to with. Because in, in, in years past, the reason why we haven't gotten money is because we had no shovel-ready projects. They weren't ready to go, so we didn't apply. And like, it was stated, they didn't want Goodyear, or, you know, Queen Creek, or whoever, to apply and get funds every single year, because they only have a certain amount, and they wanted to share it. But we generally were partially funded every time we asked for whatever we needed to do. And at that point, it was restoring 50-year-old water mains, and then it was a little bit down Western Avenue, I think, this for the benches or something. Maybe I was wrong on that. I could be wrong on the benches, because I forgot who paid for them. But, and the other, it's just really been water mains, or, or specific things like that. And it's been specifically in the neighborhoods that have been identified as low-income. So we couldn't like build something out here if it didn't fit in that box. So just want everyone to understand that. And they've been very fair with Goodyear. Being, working with the CBDG staff has been wonderful. They're very helpful. They walk us through whatever. They tell us when we need to beef it up, or un-beef it, or whatever we need to do, so that we are successful. So I would like y'all to know, it's, they're, they're great to work with. The county has been wonderful. But until they know how much money they get, then they couldn't tell us how much we would get.
All right, I'm going to speak. Is everybody down? I think this is a great opportunity, and I really like the fact that it comes back every so many years, and they give you that choice. Or you can make a choice if you're unhappy about it. Our city is growing in every direction. Hiring someone to come to city to work for us for a good program, we're going to be afraid of that? No. We've been very aggressive to hire those that we need, so that we can grow programs. And I think this is going to be a great growth. And if you look at the number of cities that is in this program, and you compare them to the other, I think we're really fit more with the other cities that are under entitlement. So if the, it becomes difficult, and you can't handle it, of course, we'll bring somebody on, and everybody here will vote for it, because you like us to push forward on our city. We don't need to stay stagnant, and we need to go back. And there are other ways to do some of the things that was mentioned around the table as a city. So I, I'm definitely 100% for this. So thanks. Anything else? Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. I think we're done. So nothing more said on this. We're going to reveal information at the next meeting, okay? Unless Julie has something more she wanted to say. Okay, no, being no further business, I'm going to adjourn this. Did I forget something? Oh, yeah. 10 minutes. I don't, I think we're going to, I think we're going to be five minutes.